Exit Executive Session this evening. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll do the certification for Executive Session. Mr. Ball?
Madam Chair, I move to certify that, to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters, lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion to go into Executive Session, were heard, discussed, or considered in Executive Session. We went in under the 2.2-3711A1 personnel, 2.2-3711A7 consultation with legal counsel, 2.2-3711A8 consultation with legal counsel in general.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, that certifies Executive Session. We'll stand for the pledge. Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Hooker. Yes, do we have any individuals that would like to speak before the Board?
Let us bow our hearts toward a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity and the freedom to be out tonight to do the county's business, and thank you for the board members, and the staff, and those gathered here tonight to take part in it as well. We ask that you give wisdom to make the decisions that be forthcoming, and thank you for those that will be honored in a little bit as well. And, Lord, whether it's elections, landfills, school closures, and who knows what else is coming around the corner, division is good for selling newspapers and making likes on Facebook, but it ain't good for the soul. Lord, just help us to remember that at the end of the day, we're Russell County. We're all in this together, and we thank you and praise you for all. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Anyone else?
Firstly, I'd like to say thank you, Lord, for giving me this opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Hooker, and thank you all for joining up. I teach government at Honaker High School, and this is democracy in action. I sat here thinking, this is awesome, that we get to petition our leaders. And I'm here to talk to you all briefly, just give you an insight into one of your teachers' lives that works for you in this county. And I want to speak to the pay scale. Now, it's my 23rd year. I started teaching at Landon High School back with Dr. Hooker a long time ago, 2001. You were there?
Yes.
Some of the best years of my life teaching at Landon High School. I moved to Honaker Elementary, and then I ended up at Honaker High School. And I personally feel, as a teacher, this is what God wants me to do. And some of you know me, some of you, I think I've taught one of you, you know I care. Care about those kids. And here's a glimpse into my life as a teacher, and everybody knows that times are hard economically. I teach, I drive a bus, I work every weekend building retaining walls. I work in the winter, clearing snow. I wrote a book in hopes that I could sell books. I work really hard to try to supplement my teaching income. And I'm going to be honest with you, I feel like I can speak for a lot of these teachers. I'm tired. I'm very, very exhausted. And I'll be honest with you, I'm losing that torch that was burning inside of me. It's a flickering flame right now. And a lot of it has to do with what I'm paid to be a teacher. And I understand, you guys have a hard decision in front of you with this school closure. That's not lost on me. I understand that. We all understand that. But I want you to look at, this is a business, and when you're involved in budgets, it's like running a business. I also own two businesses. I started a trophy business, just trying to, you know, throwing it against the wall and see what sticks, trying to make ends meet. And I'm here tonight, I hope if you can remember anything I say to you, I'm tired. And it's not just me. My teachers around me in my circle at Honaker High School just had a conversation the other day with a teacher. She said, "Brandon, what can I do?" She knows I do a lot of stuff to make average money. So we can come help me build walls? Those blocks only weigh 75 pounds. And I was joking, but she's serious. And we're here, we're here tonight to let you know, we need you to fight for us. We matter. I've got a story for it. I didn't come exactly prepared with a big speech. I'm going to speak from my heart. But I had a kid in my class, and it's funny timing how this all timed out. I have this student, and I won't mention names, but he doesn't come from a great situation. He doesn't have a dad in his home, and I'm not sure he knows who his mom is. But you know, I gravitate toward those kids. Those are, as a teacher, and they can back me up on this. That's who we fight for. And he wrote me the sweetest letter. I meant to bring the letter if I was going to speak and read it to you, but I left the letter. But I can summarize it, because I know I don't have long. He's like, "Coach Miller, you'll never understand the impact you've had on my life, what you have done for me. You fought for me when nobody else would." And he goes on, and he tells me, he says, "I just hope you understand how much us as students appreciate what you do." And you know, that had not one thing to do with how this government works and who our president is. Not my teaching, it's because I cared about that kid. And I let that kid know he had value. Just the other day on the bus, senior in high school, girl struggling, struggling tremendously. Senior talked to one person in two years. And I said, "You know what? I'm going to talk to this girl." And she was standing up, I talked to her, and she kind of made a mention, a word or two, mumbled. I don't know what she said. I said, "Hey, would you like a book? I'm going to give you one of my books." I went to the truck, got her one, brought it back, signed it, and I told her something. I said, "You matter, honey. You're a very special girl. Don't anybody will tell you different." Because I just felt in my heart, you know, God's put me in this place. And I want her to know, you know, what's going on in your world. I don't have a clue, but I see a sad look on your face every day, and I'm tired of seeing it. And I want her to know she matters. But I'm telling you this because it's not always about what you're saying in front of the class. These teachers matter. We matter. We're more than a sale on a spreadsheet. We're more than a number. We matter. We affect people's lives. I know for a fact, teachers save kids' lives. I've talked to many kids suicidal. So we matter. So I'm imploring tonight, please, fight for us. Because I did something the other day that I've never done, and I want everybody to hear this. And people that know me, I've had many ideas, and I've done a lot to make extra money trying to make ends meet. First time in my life, the other day, I searched for another job in another county. I did, I'm being honest with you. I can drive an hour, one hour, teach a job in another county, and I don't have to drive a bus, and I don't have to build walls. My back hurts me so bad, I can't even stand up to teach anymore, and I have to teach from a chair because they break me down. And I know closing this school, I know there's a lot of passion. I know people, I know you're going through it. This is the job you signed up for. You've got to make hard decisions. You've got to run this like a business. You've got to do what's right financially. But what's right in my mind, I've done this for 23 years, and what's right in my mind is we should not be the last county or second to last in teacher pay. It shouldn't happen. That is a disgrace. Tell you one more story, and I'll shut up and get out of your way. That kid I was talking about, that was in my class, that wrote me that letter. I asked him, I said, I went and called his name out, but I said, "What are you going to do with your life?" He said, and this touched me, he said, "Coach Miller, I want to be a teacher just like you." And I almost cheered up. Because, see, I know where this kid come from. I know which side of the tracks he comes from. And he very easily could have went the wrong way, and I'm talking about a dangerous way. And I said, "Really? You want to be a teacher?" He was standing at my desk, and I had my computer right there in front of me. And I'm just being as honest with you as I can be. I had every county's teacher page lined up on my screen. And you couldn't read which one was which. And he looked, now, I'm not making this up, he looked at our pay scale. This is his words. He said, "I don't want to teach there." "I don't want to teach there." Now, these teachers, they understand what I'm saying, and I know you do too. You don't want that said about your county. I know you don't. And I had other students, I've had four students in this life, timing is funny. Timing is so funny. I went to the Red Duck Festival, I set up, I had four kids come back to me that I had taught. And all four of them wanted to be teachers. Wanted to be teachers. I'm not bragging on me. I'm doing what God wants me to do. But I want you to know, you've got, we've got valuable people in this community. And that one kid in particular, he's going to be one of the best teachers because he knows where he come from. And he's going to be able to relate to those kids. You need those kids in your system. We need those kind of people that knows hardships, that will fight. You need fighters. And I'm afraid we're leaving this county. And I'm telling you, I need this. I need this to go through. My family needs, my wife, you may say, "Well, Brandon, you can go. We'll replace you." But I don't know that you can replace Misty Miller. I don't think you can replace her at Honaker High School. Because I don't think there's another Misty Miller on this earth. That's how I feel. You won't replace her. But she's looking. We're looking. And we've got to do what we've got to do to make ends meet. I'm putting two girls through college, and it's breaking me down. So I'm pleading with you, I know there's going to be people arguing against what I just said, and I respect their opinions. And I get it. I understand the emotional things that they're feeling. But I'm talking to this board tonight, you don't want your county to be talked about like my students are talking about. You don't want that. If it's in your power to make the numbers meet, you need to do this. You need to do this. And that's what I wanted to say. I just wanted to give you a glimpse into my life as a teacher in your system. And I don't want to leave your system. I want to close on that. I don't want to leave this. I fight for those kids down there, and I think the people that know me, they understand that. I did a whole lit up for Honaker High School just because my kids was hurting because we lost some students. We lost some students, and they couldn't process it. We lost, I lost seven kids that I had taught with in a two-year period. And I thought, what can I do for them? See, I care about them. Now, you can throw somebody in my position, you can put a body there, but I don't know. You may not find one that cares like me. You may not find another person like Misty Miller to put in your system, somebody you should be fighting for and be proud of. She is so good with her coaching and everything, in fact, she makes on those, she inspires them. And it would be a shame for us or any of these other teachers sitting here to go. And I know they're going. I'm having the conversation with them. They're wanting out of the profession, or they're wanting in a county that will pay them what they deserve. And I think we deserve it. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Hooker. Thanks for listening to me, and thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
My name's Laura Venzel, and I'm a speech pathologist for Russell County Schools. This is my 25th year, and I started out with Ken, much like Brandon. We worked together at Landon High School. Your daughter's one of my best friends. I work with Michelle, Linda. You've been there with me from the beginning. And I coached tennis with Mr. Gibson over here. It's my fourth year as a high school tennis coach. I have had a unique opportunity in Russell County to have worked at every single school in this county, from elementary all the way through high school, either during the school year or during the summer speech program, every single school, including Cleveland Elementary, including Elk Garden Elementary, and including Gibbons Elementary. Those three schools have closed. My son was affected by the closure of Elk Garden School. And I was affected by the closing of Cleveland, because that was probably one of my favorite places to work at in my career. I loved working there. But let me tell you something. It's okay. Those schools closed, and it's okay. It's okay. It was sad. It was sad at the time. People fought. People were upset. They probably had meetings like this at that time. But it's okay. It's okay. And it will be forgotten by the time that we start school back in the fall. But what will not be okay is if we lose 51 more teachers in a two-year span. That will not be okay. We have had a therapist job advertised, another speech therapist job, for at least three years. Not a single person has applied because we are crazy for working here for the pay that we get paid. But I love my job here. I love it. I tell everyone that will listen that I have the best time of my job every single day. But I like Brandon too. First time ever in 25 years that I've looked at other places thinking, you know, I might have to make a change because I'm so underpaid, so underpaid for what I do. And I just want to tell you, I've been on all sides of this. I've been on the closure of the school side, and I'm here on the underpaid school side. And that is what is really mattered, your teachers. You cannot have underqualified teachers. I know every single one of you. When you all ran for this position, you did not run to hire unqualified teachers. You did not hire, you did not want to hire people that have provisional license. You don't want to have the highest quality teachers for our kids in Russell County. I know you did. I know you did. And I know that it's so sad, and I don't think as eloquently as Brandon did. You did an amazing job, and we're all sitting there, every teacher here is so proud of you. That was amazing. But that's my story, and I'm so nervous. But I just wanted to thank you all so very much, and just, that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Hooker, do you have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Let's finalize our agenda. Do we have a motion that we accept our agenda this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Who did that? Mr. Eaton? Thank you, Mr. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve our minutes of...
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. What was the date on those?
April the 9th.
The April 9th meeting minutes, all in...
Need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have minutes also of the public hearing on April the 25th. Need a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, that takes us down to the recognitions this evening.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Compton. I would like to ask Ms. Georgia McCoy to come up and help me with recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of our Russell County School Board. I'd like to say that I do appreciate the words of Brandon and Laura Venzel because it's just been a very, very difficult time. But this part of our agenda is always good because we recognize people that work so hard in our county. We're going to start with the Teacher of the Month, and that is Ms. Emily Askew. And she's a teacher at Landon Middle School. She'll come forward. And I did get word from Mr. Grieding and Mr. Wright, if they couldn't be with us tonight, they had other obligations, and I hated to miss this. But I do want to read her wonderful nomination. For the 23-24 school year, Emily Askew is my son's sixth-grade math teacher at Landon Middle School. I am nominating Ms. Askew for the outstanding job she is doing to ensure that her students are mastering the required math skills in a positive learning environment. Based on what my son shares, Ms. Askew's daily lessons are well organized, and students stay on task with her direction. She manages her classroom in a way that promotes positive and encouraging learning environment. In early elementary school, math was my son's favorite subject. Unfortunately, through the 25th grade, he struggled a bit, and math was no longer his favorite. Thanks to Ms. Askew, my son has renewed his passion for math this year. His confidence in math is back since being in Ms. Askew's class. He shares his daily work and Ms. Askew's teaching methods. Ms. Askew's class is structured while also being fun. For example, her math classes had a below party as a means of teaching math concepts. In addition, my son has shared how Ms. Askew treats every student with respect, noting that she doesn't have favorites. She is fair and has the same expectations for every student. As a parent, I also appreciate Ms. Askew's prompt communication when I have reached out to her with questions or concerns, or even to request classwork when my son is absent. In conclusion, Ms. Askew takes her teaching job seriously, making every effort to ensure that all her sixth-grade students are successful in math. Ms. Askew's most deserving of this recognition.
This acknowledges that Emily Askew of Landon Middle School has been named Teacher of the Month.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do.
I'd like to also thank Mr. John Street for always placing both of those recognitions in the back row. Our next recognition is Employee of the Month, and that goes to Mr. Joe Hess. And he's the custodian at Honaker High School. If he'll come forward. Mr. Bush could not be with us tonight, but Mr. David Bostick is. If he'll come forward. Mr. Bostick, would you like to say a few words before we read his nomination?
Yeah. Joe does an awesome job. He's a hard worker. He shows up every day. He does anything he's asked of. And we're blessed to have him at Honaker High School. He's well-honored with this award, and he's real humble. I don't think he wanted to be up here today. He does an awesome job, and we're super proud of him.
Okay, I'm going to read his nomination. It says, "Joe has gone above and beyond as our custodian to make sure that our school is kept clean, neat, and attractive. During the days that we have been out for snow, Joe made sure to check the building and spent many hours removing snow to make sure that we would be prepared to go back to school. Joe works well with their administrative and custodial staff to make sure our students have a nice place to learn and that our teachers have a clean place to teach."
This acknowledges that Joe Hess of Honaker High School has been named Support Staff Employee of the Month.
Thank you for this, Senator.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
Okay, has the Board had an opportunity to look at our bills? Do we have a motion that we pay our bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, that takes us to the resignations or retirements.
Yes, we do have a few on the list, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve the retirements?
So moved.
Resignation. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, that takes us to the new personnel and transfers.
Also, in this one, we do have several that will be, needs to be approved.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve new personnel and transfers? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, it takes us to the approval of the tenure.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a list for continuing contract.
The Board had an opportunity to look at that list. Have a motion that we approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, it takes us to your action items.
Madam Chair, we do have three action items tonight. The first one is to request the approval of employee health insurance for the 24-25 school year. There will be no increase in the premiums for employees this year.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve our employee health insurance plan for 2024-2025? Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Likewise. Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Madam Chair, I do request the approval to close Swords Creek Elementary School.
I would like to make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Okay, the third action item is I'd like to request the approval to close Copper Creek Elementary School.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a statement. I really want our teachers to get a raise, and I pray that they do. I think you're very underpaid, and it's went on for way too long. And I pray that you get it, and it's all in the hands of our board supervisors. And, but I can't, in my heart, I can't vote to close this school down because we have 144 students. Belfast has 142. I think if we're going to close one, we should close both. And that way, you all would get more money. But I cannot support it.
I concur with Mr. Parsons. It's hard for me to justify closing Copper Creek when we don't close Belfast. If you go and do them, I'll say do them all three. Like I've heard Sage rip the Band-Aid off and do them all three at one time. So I'm a no vote on Copper Creek.
Again, I pray that you get your raise because your ways are being deserved in years.
Got any updates, Dr. Hooker?
Yes, I do have a few updates. It's actually reminders. The RCCTC graduation will be on Thursday, May the 16th, at LMS Auditorium, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Also, the RCCTC nursing graduation will be on Friday, May the 17th, at the Russell County Career and Technology Center, beginning at 6:00 p.m. And then the graduation dates for the three high schools is on May, Sunday, May the 19th. Castlewood will begin at 1:00 p.m. LHS will begin at 4:00 p.m., and Honaker High School at 7:00 p.m. I'd also like to add that both boards, this Board and the Board of Supervisors, have been working diligently on the budget. And we do not have a vote yet because we have to wait on the Governor to finalize his budget at this time. And we have another information item, which is the first reading of policies.
Okay, we have the sales tax, $357,036.46. The ADM is $31.42. The Board had a chance to see the maintenance report and the expenditure report. The board had a chance to see the maintenance report and the expenditure report. I guess you gave us the update on your future agenda items already, haven't you, Dr. Hooker?
Yes.
Okay. Do you need the continued meeting? You need to make a mention of that?
Yes, there will be a special called board meeting on Tuesday, May the 21st, 2024, at 5:00 PM to approve personnel. And then, of course, the next school board meeting will be on Tuesday, June the 4th. Executive session will begin at 5:00. The meeting will begin at 6:30 PM.
Does any board member have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say something if I could. As a board and as for myself, you hate the thoughts of closing any school, period. But when you look at this as a business, and it is a business, as bad as anybody hates to see this, this is a business and we're losing our best employees. Anybody out there that's got any business sense to them, and I think most of you do, educated people and business sense people, should have enough sense to know, when you run a business and you don't pay your employees adequately, what do they do? They leave you for other companies. And that's what's happening to us. And we're at a point now to where if we don't stop the bleeding, we're going to bleed out. Because we're hiring teachers back right now that don't even, I mean, they're working on a provision. And we can't even get people to put in an application for a job here. And that is sad. It is sad that Russell County is in this situation. And it is. It's bad. And it's not happened overnight. It's not this board's fault. I mean, this has been slowly happening over the years. But it's time that we take action and do something about it. It's time that this group here does the right thing. I have a, I have a good feeling the board of supervisors is going to do the right thing because it's time that this county starts looking for, looking in the best interest of its employees. And Brandon Miller is exactly right. Our kids, our grandkids, they're with our, they're with these teachers just as much as they're with the parents. And I don't know about you all, but me, myself, I want the best teachers educating my son. I want them to have, I want them to have the type people that's God-fearing people, that's looking over my son at school. That's what I want. And we have not been able to do that because of the lack of the pay that we give our staff, and it is pathetic. So closing these schools is a business move, not a political move, not an emotional move. It is a business move. For us to come up with the kind of cost savings it's going to take to put this new pay scale in place, we have to do something. Everybody wants to gripe and complain and say, "Don't close my school." But I've yet to have one person that's given me a, a plan to come up with this kind of cost savings. I hear raise taxes, but I have people in my circle that, you know, struggle to pay their power bill or their, or buy groceries. We can't afford to pay, to raise taxes as bad as times are right now. So it's time that this board mans up and gets in their own budget and digs in and does the right thing. And I tell you right now, when this passes, you can thank Dr. Hooker and Brooke Wade for all the work they've done. Because it is amazing that we've never had a superintendent put in the work like this right here. So when this happens and you get this pay scale, that's who you can thank.
And I'd like to say something else too. Dr. Hooker took a lot of bad, bad stuff about this. She didn't, she didn't go about this, you know, happy. She was, she actually cried. And she is the lowest-paid superintendent in the state of Virginia. And she works her butt off. And, and she should get more money, but we don't have it. But she, she never complains about it. She just goes and does her work, just like all of our teachers. And they are underpaid. And I pray that we, that they get the raise.
I would like to say something. I, when I decided to run for school war last year, I ran because God told me to run. And that's the only reason. And it's because, you know, God knows, and we know, our children and our, I've got grandchildren, that granddaughter will be starting school. And I want them to be happy and I want them to be taken care of. And I love our schools in Russell County. And my kids went to Swords Creek. My husband went to Swords Creek. And it is very sentimental school. I love it. And, you know, it was told when my kids were there, we're going to, it's going to close, it's going to close. And, you know, I prayed it wouldn't. And, you know, back then, as a parent, I would get upset and say, "Don't close the school. It's good. It's great." You know, small school, better learning, you know, one-on-one. And it is great. I will, I will say it is great. But then when I got elected to this, people don't realize until you're here what behind the scenes is. And I, for one, though, for a fact, I used to say, you hear people say, "Well, the central office, they're overpaid. Cut their pay." If you've seen the list, the, I mean, not, not just one or two things. If you've seen the list of job responsibilities that these people take on, they are well, well worth their money. I mean, they deserve it and more. And as they said, Dr. Hooker, I mean, this was not an easy decision. I tried, we tried every way to keep Swords Creek open, to keep, to keep Copper Creek. I mean, we tried to think of ways to fundraise, to, to get ways to do the building, but it just wasn't, it wasn't there. It, I mean, there was not enough that we could do to keep them open and get these teachers their raises. And, and as I said before, it's a building. You know, my home is made up of me and my family, not the building that it's in. It's the people inside of it. And you can take those people inside and go, "We can move to a new building and we'll still be the same family." But you can't take a building and, and that don't make the family. So we can move these kids and I'm sure they will still be 100% loved and taken care of no matter what school they're in. So, I mean, I hate it. I hate to see the schools closed, but we are trying to do better for all of Russell County.
Mr. Gibson, do you have anything this evening?
Well, it pretty well said, you know, nobody wanted to do this. I mean, my three boys went to Copper Creek and I love that little school. I mean, had Belfast been on the, on the docket like I thought it, it ought to be and it probably will be, not next year or the next, probably. It'd have been a much harder vote for me, but even not being there, I just, I couldn't in good conscience do it. But no, I agree. I mean, our teachers are underpaid. And Dr. Hooker, I know somebody said last time she got $23,000 raise, she got a $5,000 raise. It went from 118 to 123. And she's still, if not the lowest-paid, one of the lowest-paid in the state of Virginia. But, you know, we have to stop the bleeding. Can't lose 51. It's not sustainable to leave 51 teachers in two years. We'd have to consolidate for lack of teachers instead of lack of students. So, you know, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. And that's where we're at.
Well, in the past, schools have closed, but I've been told that money didn't go towards the salaries of the employees. So this time, with the help of the board of supervisors, it should and it better because this is not an easy thing to do to our communities.
I would encourage you to call your board supervisor's member.
We have done, we have went far and beyond. So now, you know, it's time for everybody to come together collaboratively and support our employees, our teachers. We've got good people in all of our schools. We've got excellent administrators. And the first thing we looked at and Dr. Hooker looked at, she said, "We, all of our people, we're keep, they're going to have jobs." So. Isn't that right, Dr. Hooker?
Yes.
Yes. You said, "We can utilize all of our employees in Copper Creek, Swords Creek, so they'll have places, they're going to have jobs."
And I, and I mind you that this new pay scale that we have proposed, we are still behind. That, that ain't the fix. It's a Band-Aid. And we still have got to work to increase that. Because we, with the pay scale, yes, it's going to be a game changer for a lot of teachers, a lot of families. Because we, we will be competitive to a few different counties, but we still are behind. And we're behind across the board, support staff, administration, across the board. You guessed it, we are behind. And, and we have got, we have got to do something about it now. And we have actually, this, it's been, it's been let go on far too long. So it's, it's time, it's time that we take the savings of closing a school and put it into the pockets of the ones doing the work out here during the day. So, and I think, and I think it's going to happen. So. And I, and I appreciate this board and I definitely appreciate Dr. Hooker for all the work she's put in on this.
And I'd like to thank you for what you do. And, and I know God's in, in your life, the way that you talk. And I'm glad that you, that you transfer that to your students. I really appreciate you.
I'd like to say that I don't think there's a board member here that doesn't understand what you parents that have kids at both of these schools feel like. I, I understand how you feel, but, you know, there was, there was a lot of things said about other schools. Your kids will be loved wherever they're at.
Absolutely.
I'm sure of that. Just because they have to go to another school doesn't mean that they will be neglected. They, they will not. I can assure you that. It might, they may have been a little more one-on-one at a, at a smaller school, but we have great teachers at every school. And they work hard and they love the children. And as to say, you know, that they're going to get better treatment at a smaller school. I, my kids went to Honaker Elementary and I couldn't have asked for a better place for them to go. Now, I mean, that's just my personal opinion. You're, they're going to get loved wherever they're at and they're going to get a good, a good education. It doesn't matter where they're at. But this, I understand where you're at too. It's a hard decision. And it wasn't an easy decision for any one of these board members. It was just, you just had to look at the big picture that, that we all had to look at. And you can't ignore one thing just to give, you know, some what they, what they want. You've got to look at it all. And I, I think this will be a good thing. It's going to be hard for people to accept what the way it is, the change. And that's what it is. It's change. And we have to go through that all through life, you know. So. I, I, I know that each member on this board wants the best for your children.
I'd like to thank each and every one of our employees for all that they do.
We'd like to thank Belfast Ward, our meal this evening. We appreciate you. And I appreciate each and every one of the board members.
It, it's, it's been difficult, but we have to look at all of Russell County schools because if you don't have good employees, you're going to be shutting down the entire system. You're just not one or two. You're going to, you're going to impact the whole gamut. So we, we're... We're doing our best. And I hope it, I hope it is a success. And collaboratively, we're going to work with the supervisors and we're going to see this thing through. And I appreciate every one of you. Thank you all for coming this evening. From the bottom of my heart, appreciate you being here. And we're a county. We're, we're, we're a people together, so let's, let's make it work together. And anywhere you can see improvements that need to be done, share it. I mean, we want to listen. I want to listen. I'm sure everyone up here, to make our county better, make our schools better, community, everything. We, we want it to be in the forefront of southwest Virginia because it's a beautiful coun, it's a beautiful county. You can travel anywhere and go anywhere and come back, but Russell County, it looks really pretty when you come, come back over the line. So.
Okay, if no board member has anything to say tonight, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn until May 21st, right, Dr. Hooker?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Be safe going home. Thank you for coming.